This is our community's opportunity to meet District Four candidates for the San Diego Board of Supervisors. My name is Bob Lehman. I'm the Chair of the Arts Advocacy Group of the San Diego Regional Arts and Culture Coalition, which is presenting today's Candidates Forum. I'd like to thank everyone who made this forum possible, including our Board members Matt Carney of the San Diego Ballet, Victoria Hamilton, Alan Zeder, Executive Director Felicia Shaw who could be here today, all of our STRAC Board members representing arts and culture across the county. The Board members that are here, could you please raise your hand and we give them a little round of applause? Thank you. I would also like to thank our hosts here at the beautiful Mingay International Museum, and always their great team, their staff, their volunteers, and their inspiring leader Jessica Hansi Nework. This is an exciting time to be part of the San Diego Arts and Culture Community. Thanks to the advocacy work of STRAC and people like Alan and Victoria and Matt and Felicia, we now have a County Commission for Arts and Culture, which started meeting this spring. The new commission emphasized the importance and contribution and economic success of our region to job creation, to our thriving tourism industry, and to the overall quality of life for every person and every community. And the commission will work closely with the person we choose to fill the District Four seat. Tonight, as stakeholders, we are here to learn more about the four candidates who would like to represent us as a District Four Supervisor. With the Board of Supervisors now divided between two Democrats and two Republicans, whoever wins this seat will play a key role in making future decisions. Decisions that will impact the arts and culture community and our daily lives. San Diego County District Four is incredibly important to our arts and culture community. It is home to the largest concentration of arts and culture organizations in this region, including cultural districts in Balboa Park and Old Town, parts of downtown. It is also home to a wide diversity of culture institutions, north to Claremont, across Mission Valley, west to College Area, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, out to Rancho San Diego, and south to Encanto. We, the people of these neighborhoods, will be choosing the next District Four Supervisor on August 15th. If no candidate wins the majority on August 15th, the election will go to a runoff on November 7th, the top two vote getters. So it's important for us to listen and to learn before we place our vote. Tonight, we'll have the chance to do just that, with an hour to hear from our candidates. Serving as our moderator tonight is my friend and arts colleague, Latisha Gomez-Franco, the current Executive Director of the Balboa Arts Conservation Center here in Balboa Park. Many of you have worked with Latisha during her 15 years as an arts administrator and curator, and in her role as a Senior Funding Manager for the City of San Diego Commission for Arts and Culture. Please help me welcome Latisha.
Thank you, Bob. Hello, everyone. As Bob mentioned, my name is Latisha Gomez-Franco, and I will be your moderator for today's forum. We'll begin by going over the rules, and then we'll move on to introductions and the questions. The rules are pretty simple. I have a list of questions. I will share the questions, and then I will invite each candidate to answer. Rule one: Each candidate gets three minutes to respond to each question. Two: We will rotate the order of who answers each question for a second every round. Three: Our timekeeper, sitting right over there, standing right over there, will hold up a sign when the candidate reaches three minutes, at which point we will proceed to the next candidate or to the next question. And fourth: We will take audience questions, which were submitted on card at the beginning of the event, as time allows. Okay, so we'll begin with the questions, and because we are so creative, the first question actually doubles as an introduction. Please take three minutes to tell us about yourself, what you see as a county supervisor's primary role, and what you think is the most important skill of being a good county supervisor. Why should we vote for you? And we'll start with Amy.
All right, well, how many of you have been to a forum already? All righty, well, my name's Amy Reiger, and I'm a lifelong San Diegan. And what it really takes to be a good county supervisor is to be a listener. And the fact of the matter is, in the past few years, people have not felt listened to. By a show of hands, how many of you have been to a county Board of Supervisors meeting? Great, thank you. How many of you, by a show of hands, have noticed that the county Board of Supervisors sometimes are looking at their phones instead of paying attention to the public? Yes. Well, that's really why I got involved. Last year, I stood up and I bravely challenged Nathan Fletcher when nobody else did. Thank you. I saw how his failed policies were hurting San Diegans, and even worse, how divisive he was, and how he treated people that didn't agree with him. And so what I think it takes to be a good county supervisor is, you have to be able to hear other people's hearts, and listen to people, and treat people with the dignity and respect that you want. And no matter what their opinion is, you have to be a listener, and you have to serve people. So this year, wow, he was only in office for about five months, and then, of course, the allegations came out about him, and he has now resigned. And now we're just 39 days away from a special election. And yes, this is going to be a game changer. And honestly, the reason why I jumped into this race is, I do not like the way that San Diego has been going for the past few years. I've lived here in San Diego since I was four years old. I have fond memories of being here in Balboa Park, and it saddens me to see our crown jewel, Balboa Park, in the repair that it is, the disrepair that it is right now. And so I want to thank my fellow candidates for being here. I feel like we're all bonding through all of these forums, and I look forward to hearing from you. And I just want you to know that I'm here to serve you and to listen to you. And I also want to thank you so much for doing this, Latisha. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the creative question. Good evening, everyone. Happy Friday evening. I'm Monica McGovern-Stappel, and I'm really, really excited about the opportunity that we have at the county to invest even more than we already have into people. The county is about people, especially our most vulnerable populations, and it really does have the infrastructure to be able to serve people that we are seeing every single day, that need our help more than ever. So I do think that as a good county Board of Supervisor, it takes a heart for people. This is what I have demonstrated as a council member in 2018. I did run against all odds, or against several institutions, but it were community members that said that they did deserve better and wanted better, so we went up against those systems, and we won in very dramatic fashion. And what has, you know, is always challenging, to go into an actual system and keep your values true and keep community members at the forefront of your decisions, but I've been able to do that. And that is also what it takes. It does take knowledge and expertise when you go into a system that has an $8.1 billion budget, because there are many, many different nooks and crannies that we have to look behind in order to truly make what our hearts desires are, put those on paper, and then make them work in a system that really wasn't necessarily meant to work for all of us collectively. And so I've been able to do that for the last five years, and I want to take that leadership to a broader level at the county Board of Supervisors, and I think this is an opportune time to do so. I also would just say, I love the arts and culture community. We have woven arts and culture into a lot of the solutions we've proposed in the City Council District Four, including the peace movement, Let's Live, Let's Love, where we were able to give funding for local artists to paint on our electrical boxes and the light to help us with our graffiti issues that we've had in the community. But that was a collective effort, along with a holistic approach that we had towards gaining more peace in our community and reducing crime and violence in our communities. Arts and culture is so important to the heartbeat of San Diego, this entire region, and it really does bring out the best in us. It's a place where we can all get together, no matter what our values are, and we can enjoy each other and also learn from each other. So we have incorporated that into what we do as an office, and I think that that's extremely important, especially for this community, because it's not an outlier issue. It should be integrated into the solutions that we propose. And so I'm happy to be here with you this evening. Thank you.
Um, conclusion. Thanks for having me. Thanks for being here. My name's Paul McQuaid. I am the only one not from San Diego. I grew up outside Chicago, and I was here, I was just hitting the moons, and I chose to stay here once I was hired, because I love San Diego County so much. So I chose to raise my son here. He went to San Jacinto High School, and then he went to Pasadena High School. He's now a film student at Villanova, so he goes to Los Angeles. Took it this morning on the way to Chicago, so he was so calm and telling me about that, and I just said, we'll talk about it later. I think the most important quality about being a supervisor and being an independent representative is wisdom. Wisdom to discern when to open the mouth, when not to open the mouth, when to wish to others, when to take into account the big picture. Wisdom to understand all values, I feel, and with wisdom, like the wisdom of solving, can accomplish anything. And some of the wisdom I want to impart in the council is that it's not red or blue that affects us right now. Homeless affects everyone regardless of what color they vote for. Climate affects everyone regardless of what color they vote for. I came from a city, I grew up outside, and it had beautiful artwork. But if people are afraid to leave their homes, they can't, they can't take advantage of that artwork. I spent this morning with two families, one family in North Park slash Hillclass, and their concern was that they can't go out at the dark because of fear of the cost of it, whether it be criminals or by the homeless. And it's a beautiful artwork in Hillclass, in North Park, all of the city, Balboa Park, wanting to come together as one people, one council, and strive to make it better. They are just quiet like that one right now, but they've been in for far too long. There's too much talk, not enough listening, too much money in film projects, but not with a plan, a course of action, because there's out of this problem. And the more infighting we have, the people are in a hole. So that's my goal, is to bring everyone together as one, especially in the west side of California. I had great time raising my son here. I want other families to be able to raise their children here to reclaim the title of America's finest city. I've been up and down the coast, I've driven all the way to get there through the Canada. And San Diego, I feel, is by far the best city in California. And so we'll get back to that.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for making time to be here. My name's Janessa Goldbeck. I just want to say that it's such an honor and joy to actually be able to talk about arts and culture at a forum like this. We've been talking about a lot of other things, homelessness, the rising cost of living, the rise in crime in San Diego County, but to have the opportunity to talk about the impact that arts and culture has on our community and what we can invest in at the county is really amazing. So for those of you I don't know yet, my name's Janessa Goldbeck. I was born and raised here in San Diego County. My mom was a public school teacher. My dad drove a tow truck. I was really fortunate to go to school and study journalism and African studies, and my studies brought me to Uganda and Rwanda, where I learned that there was an ongoing genocide in the Darfur region of Sudan. And I was 19 years old. I was fired up. I wanted to do something about it, so I returned to my campus, started organizing. By the time I was a senior, I was the National Organizing Director for the Student Movement and the genocide of Darfur, over half a million students around the country. I moved to Washington DC right after that to do that work full-time. I learned there how to pass federal legislation to protect civilians in conflict zones, working with, first, the Bush administration, and then the Obama administration to do just that. And that's really where I got my bug for foreign policy advocacy, and understanding that we could organize people to make a real impact in the world. I mean, Darfur is this corner of the world that couldn't have been further away from the American consciousness, and yet we were able to mobilize and get real action. So once I realized that that was possible, it sort of opened the door for me, and I wanted to be better at it, so I decided to make kind of an unusual choice as a human rights advocate. At the age of 26, as an openly gay woman, I decided to join the United States Marine Corps, which raised a lot of eyebrows in my friend group. But I wanted to do it because I felt like it was really two sides of the same coin, protecting civilians, working to protect civilians in conflict zones from the 10,000-foot policy level, and then actually doing that work on the ground. So I joined the Marine Corps, thought I would just do a few years and get out, but I really fell in love with it. Spent seven years as a combat engineer officer, as well as a uniformed victim advocate, working with survivors of sexual assault. And I probably would have stayed in longer, but my mom got really sick. She was diagnosed with Alzheimer's after a long fight with MS, and so I came back to San Diego County to take care of her. And that's really when I shifted my focus to working to make the system better in the United States. I now run a national veterans advocacy organization that represents over a million and a half vets and military families around the world, excuse me, around the country, and our goal is to lift up their voices in fights that really matter to them. I got into this race back in February, before Nathan Fletcher, the scandal erupted, because I really want to make a difference, and I have over 15 years of experience doing that at the federal, state, and local level. I want to put that experience to work here in San Diego County, because this is my home. I grew up here. It matters to me what happens here. I know San Diego County can be its best self, but we need to think big, and I think that is the quality that makes a good supervisor, a good public official, is hope and a vision of what can be and what can be better. So thanks for being here. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone, for those great introductions. Second question. Recent county studies have found that nonprofit arts and cultural organizations spend more than $1 billion annually and employ more than 35,000 people. This room is full of people who are part of the arts and culture community. Do you have any substantive personal experience with an arts and culture organization, such as serving on a board, volunteering, or working as an employee? And we'll start with Janessa, and then we'll move it to the left.
Yeah, thanks for that question. So I grew up in the arts, growing up in San Diego's county public schools. I was in theater, I did improv theater, which maybe is kind of like what we're doing up here. At college, I had my own radio show on our college radio station. It was at 3:30 in the morning, and my dad would tune in over the internet radio to listen. And I played in a couple of bands, very, very, very bad bands. Still play guitar now, but just around a campfire. Professionally, I've been really fortunate to get to serve on the Board of Organizations that really support the arts. I served on the Board of the Women's Museum of California, which obviously does the Women's Film Festival every year here in San Diego County, and was recently, most recently, a co-chair of the San Diego LGBT Centers Board, which really invests in lifting up art and music and culture by the LGBTQ community. So, you know, those are a couple of experiences I've had, but I just want to speak a little bit more personally. My dad was a musician growing up, and I always wanted, I mean, he's like, he looks kind of like Harrison Ford. He played rock and roll, and I wanted to be just like him. And over the years, we've grown apart in many ways. Politically, we couldn't be more opposite. He's a, you know, big Trump supporter. I am a, you know, born and blue Democrat, and we have a lot of differences in our personal lives, in our personal opinions, but we still play music together. And in the last few years, it's been a really amazing place for us to be able to come together, put aside our differences, and just jam out to late 60s and 70s music. I'm trying to introduce them to some from my generation. He doesn't like it, so we'll stick with the middle ground. But I think that's the power of the arts in our community, is it can be a place to express really different opinions. It can be a place to bring people together, and I think it's great that San Diego County has revived the Arts and Culture Commission, but the county of Los Angeles has an entire department devoted to arts and culture. I think we've only just kind of scratched the surface of what we can do here. Here in Balboa Park, there's an amazing consortium of organizations and people who are working really hard with very little to make things happen and make amazing arts available to our community. And I believe our county can do more to support that work, lift it up, and really make sure that we are investing, because I know it had a huge impact on my childhood growing up, it's had a big impact on who I am as a person, and I want every kid and family in San Diego County to have that opportunity.
So I have a tough attitude to follow. So I grew up outside Chicago. My parents made sure that we spent a lot of time downtown. Art museum, we lived in the science institute, the film museum, our ad hoc classroom. I remember we lived downtown. We actually belonged to a church downtown, so it was a half-hour drive from our suburban home to church, and then that was followed by an afternoon of the arts. I was the only tuba player in my elementary school band. I think the only reason why I got to end this guy was the only tuba player as well. I also did improv in high school. We wrote costumes though, so I don't know if this is the proper. And I said, my son's a film student. I've been learning, I've been having class courses in film over the last two years. This is probably a film year in the fall, so I've learned a million things about film. My younger sister and her husband are in the cinema, but I've also traveled the world. Grew up, most of the chances in real life have become museums, but those museums are a natural. The spin-class artwork in the cinema museums, especially subscriptions, go to Normandy and view the land in the cities, as well as the churches where the peregrinos came down. That is just amazing, it's really, it's a moving, moving experience. I have family that fought in World War II, so it's been an entusiasm. And then also in Iraq, unfortunately, a lot of that artwork and that history was destroyed when ISIS took over a lot of countries, but while we were there, we had the option to sit, and I just always enjoyed embracing myself in different cultures. I'm actually going to Fuji today this month, and the country briefed, they told us not to wear hats when we walk into town, and don't touch anybody on the head. It's a memorable history. Fuji was one of their first founding cannibals, so I'm gonna keep my hands to myself. And I think it's always an amazing thing to express yourself. It's something that is an outwit, that everyone should be able to enjoy, and that's pretty nice, I say about that.
I'm gonna take up some of my time and ask you.
You say you're gonna finish during the campaign.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so just on the professional side, I think one is, we serve as the Budget Chair, so part of that process is trying to fully fund Penny for the Arts within the City of San Diego. So we've been making progress, not as much as we would like to, but really working and advocating for that at the City of San Diego, that's extremely important. When I left the City of San Diego as a staffer and went to work at the ACLU, I also volunteered to be a part of a community panel to evaluate grants for folks who are applying for arts and culture funding. So that was a very interesting experience, very inclusive experience. And also, I've had the honor and the pleasure, as a council member, to establish the Black Arts and Culture District in Encanto, in the City of San Diego. So that has really been an honor, so that's on the professional side. On the personal side, I grew up with music all around me. My grandmother was the youngest of 13. She was the singer. We grew up in church. I directed church choir, started with the children's choir, and then went up from there. Also did, you know, plays within school, but also within church, so that teaches you a lot, even if you're not so talented, you know, about how to interact with people, you know, how to memorize your lines, really, really fun stuff. So I grew up just with music all around me, and I still do love music in college. I was a part of the glee club. I had to give that up because I had to work through college, but it was an amazing time. We got to go up to Washington DC and sing for some of the representatives in Washington DC of the federal government. So also singing at the praise team at church, but, and that's not directly arts and culture, I guess, it depends on how you define it, but I really love music. I love the arts. I love theater, and I try my best to either participate and see plays, or if I can be a part of anything that has anything to do with music and I have the time to do it, I'm gonna do it, because it's just, we used to, my great aunt used to play the piano, so, you know, our Friday evenings would be her playing the piano and the rest of the family kind of surrounding her and harmonizing around her. And so that's where I grew up, that's where my heart is, and why it's so important to me, and why I understand that arts and culture changes lives, and why I'm so committed to it.
Well, 2020 was really, for many people, a year of fear. In 2020, people were afraid for their public health, for their own personal health, for the health of their loved ones, and quite honestly, people were very concerned about their livelihoods. And artists and musicians are no different. They were wondering about how they were going to pay their rent, or how they were going to make it. So by late 2020, that's when the state decided to put San Diego County in the purple tier. How many of you remember of the color-coded tier system? Well, if you recall, the purple tier system said that museums had to close. And so I had a nine-year-old at that time, and the zoo was going to close too, and they were scheduling it two weeks in advance, so we came out to Balboa Park and the zoo. And I was walking around El Prado, and that's when I heard this beautiful violinist fill the Prado, and I became overwhelmed with emotion. And that's when I realized I had not heard live music in nearly a year. We were in a world that was starving for community, connection, art, culture, music, and laughter. And so, as you know, museums continued to stay closed well into 2021. In fact, in California, we were the last ones in the entire country to reopen our museums. And so it really hurt artists. And so in spring of 2021, I saw a need, and that's when my nonprofit decided to help out small businesses and artists, and we started having markets. These were open-air markets. This was a safe place where people could come and sell their art. It was a place where musicians could perform. It was overwhelming. People could dance. It was amazing. And so I'm really proud that we were able to step up and help artists and musicians during that time. In fact, on one night, we did outdoors, so it was completely safe for people. It was 100 people came out to hear from a group of comedians. And during this, it was just, people were laughing, and people were forgetting about all the fear that was out there. And I'll never forget, this comedian just stopped, and he said, "I haven't performed in over a year. Thank you. This is gonna help me provide for my family." And so I believe that right now, our biggest need in San Diego County is addressing our mental health crisis, and I believe that art can do that. Art can bring people together. It can break through the divisiveness and the anger. It can engage the community. It can inspire. And what I really loved is when I was talking to you about dancing. People need to move more. Thank you so much to all the artists and musicians and performers who bring beauty into our lives.
Thank you very much for that. Third question. The county Board of Supervisors awards more than $15 million in taxpayer dollars each year to community organizations through the Neighborhood Reinvestment and Community Enhancement Programs. Recently, the supervisors voted to no longer approve these grants at public meetings. How would you have voted on this, and why? And we'll start with Paul, and hand it over to the right.
I'm laughing because at the last one, I got the trans-pants question for salsa. I'm laughing because at the last one, I got the transatlantic question for salsa. I believe when it comes to public funds, those issues should be made in the open. No government operates without the taxpayers unless, correct? The taxes, all the funds that come into the town come from our taxes. So we would like to know how our money's been spent. I work for a lot of nonprofits, SLSA and in the Grand Texas. People want to do investment, it's going to, right? I don't want that going to be done. I don't want mayors or supervisors to have a slush fund that's set up in the side where they can fund their own projects and not tell anyone about them or there's no accountability. Public funds are just that, public funds, and you do public eye. And it's as simple as that.
Not a lot of daylight between us here on this one. I do think that our county has suffered a lot of trauma and there is a lot of lack of trust in faith and confidence in government right now. All around the county, problems that seem to be things that politicians have said they'll fix over and over again are getting worse. We obviously have the resignation of the supervisor in this seat. And so I think it's really important that at every level of government, wherever we can, bring more transparency to the process, we should do that. And in this particular instance, I think the supervisor's vote was half-right in that they are allowing staff or ensuring that staff review the grants first to make sure there isn't a conflict of interest. Great, but then bring it to the public through a public process and allow the public to be aware of what's going on. Having a discretionary budget of this size is a pretty big deal. Not all local elected officials have such a fund. And so I think taxpayers deserve to know where their funds are going and community organizations who are competing for those funds deserve to know what grants are being awarded as well. Because we often, I'm not gonna say we often, but there can be a perception that the same groups get funding over and over again, smaller groups that might not have the infrastructure that large organizations have, might feel like they're just not even considered at the beginning of it. So if we're gonna make it a more equitable process, open it up to groups, I think it makes sense for there to be transparency about the process and for the public to know where their funds are going. And not buried on a website somewhere, which is where it's gonna be, but out in front and in public. And I do understand that adds time to the process, but I think public engagement is really important and the more public engagement we have in our government, the better off our society will be.
I would have voted no on it. I get a little bit nervous when the Board of Supervisors doesn't allow for public comment. We have seen how that has happened in the past few years and I'm a big believer in transparency, openness, and community engagement. And in particular, when it comes to an allotment of funds like this, even more so why we need public comment. And when it comes to the art and culture community, I am just concerned that there could be some favoritism and there could be some people who maybe are campaign donors who get first dibs on these grants. And I just feel that at the end of the day, when the county says that one of its highest goals is equity, that the county is failing for equity. So I would vote no, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think we all agree on this. I can also speak to the current process that we have at the city with a much smaller pot of money, where each of the offices get about, you know, it really is no more than $250,000, it could be as low as $50,000 of savings from the previous year discretionary funding that we could use to then support organizations out in the community. And there is, you know, an application process, it does go through staff, but it is also put on the agenda so that the public can see what offices are giving to what organizations. Then after that, our council policy requires that we don't, I can't say, you know, Monica Montgomery staff gave this money to this organization, it does have to state that the city of San Diego did because it is your taxpayer dollars. And so I think we all agree and in addition, you know, there is a process that works. People can still comment, you know, as it goes to the agenda and folks still get the funding that they need in the organization. So I, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily know the reasoning behind it, it may have been efficiency, you know, and I understand that, but especially at a time like this, we really need to be transparent with where public funds are going at this point in time. And also just the structure of the Board of Supervisors, you know, at the city, there's a mayor and nine council members and there's kind of a check and balance there and then the public also provides that check and balance. But the Board of Supervisors is kind of like, you know, supreme at the county and so the public input is super, super important there because it provides a check and balance for the type of authority that they have. So I just, I do think that it's important to be as transparent as we possibly can.
Thank you. After a 30-year absence, the county of San Diego redirected the San Diego County Arts and Culture Commission and held its first meeting just two months ago. County District Four is home to by far the largest concentration of the county's arts and culture groups. The city of San Diego provides major funding for arts and culture nonprofits, working with the City of San Diego Commission for Arts and Culture to guide those awards. What role would you like to see the County Arts and Culture Commission play? Would you support the County Arts and Culture Commission taking a similar approach by directing funding for arts and culture organizations on a county-wide basis? Begin with Monica and turn it to the left.
Okay, yeah, it's super, super exciting that we, this commission has been re-instituted at the county. I'm very excited about that. I would say there are a lot of lessons learned from the city's process. As I said before, I participated in a community panel that was able to have input on applications that were coming to the Arts and Culture Commission to receive funding. I like that process. We are now doing sort of more of a strategic plan at the city of San Diego. And I think that that is important because in any institution, there is the possibility that we are leaving folks out. And so because we're starting anew and afresh, it'd be an awesome time to set up a strategic plan that does guide us to actually center equity, you know, instead of just talking about it. And that's a great, great opportunity that we have. But, you know, the city has a good setup for this. The other thing that I hear from community members and organizations is that some of the processes are, need to be streamlined, especially for our smaller organizations that may not have the bandwidth to go through all of the application process and, you know, waiting for the funding the way that they do. So I would be really, really interested in making sure that we're starting off by ensuring that we are centering equity and that all of the organizations have an opportunity to apply and receive funding as they need it. And it is not, you know, just going to some of the legacy organizations, which we truly appreciate and love, but also giving other people the opportunity. The last thing I'll say on this is something we've also talked about that I would want to lead on a broader scale is the idea of a creative economy and the strategic planning that goes along with, you know, kind of broadening our definition of art and culture and making sure that people who may be on the outskirts of that conversation are also able to apply for this funding and understand and know that it's actually there for them. Part of the battle is making sure we're getting to people who are doing that real grassroots work. We oftentimes in government fail at that. I have supported many efforts, the strategic lines on ethnic chambers, community coalition building, and one of the main reasons for that is to make sure we're getting the word out broad and far about what resources we actually have. Because that is one of the biggest challenges that I hear in the community. So it's a great opportunity to start, start afresh and new and build a foundation on those principles.
Well, I am so glad that the county reestablished this commission. And if you are a commissioner, can you please stand up? We'd like to acknowledge you. I know Bob is the vice chair, thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you for serving with the city. And I applaud the city of San Diego for the role that you've taken with arts and culture. And this is exactly why we need a commission to take it county-wide. Because art and culture, they don't just belong in the city of San Diego, it doesn't just belong in the Balboa, in Balboa Park where people can come and play tourist, it belongs in every corner of San Diego County. It belongs in our marginalized communities, it belongs in our suburbs, it belongs in our public artworks. And here's the thing, when I'm speaking with artists and musicians and performers, what they're telling me about is there is a brain drain. It is because there is such an arts and culture scene in Los Angeles that many artists are drawn there because there's more of an infrastructure and support system. And we need to have that kind of robust support system to sustain an artistic community. Because we all know we're just gonna be better off with more art and beauty in our lives. And we need to be able to make sure that artists are be able to provide for themselves and their families and provide those opportunities for them. So I'm absolutely in favor of San Diego not becoming Los Angeles. But you know what, here's what I will do as your county supervisor when it comes to the arts and culture, we're gonna beat LA.
Great, beat LA, I mean, I can't top that. So I agree with a lot of what's been said, 100% support the creation, re-establishment of the commission and the commission being able to approve and award funding to organizations. I distinctly remember as a board member at the Women's Museum, waiting on the status of our city grant. And this is well before anyone in this room was involved, so this is no shame on anybody, but how arduous that process was. And that was a very small organization at the time and a really tight budget. So I do think making sure that the process is streamlined and accessible to organizations of all sizes is really important. I also think, you know, I mentioned earlier, the county of Los Angeles has its own department of arts and culture with dozens of staff. You know, San Diego, right now we have a commission, that's great, but I think we can go a lot further in terms of infrastructure. That obviously requires funding. And when we look at the priorities that the county has, we've, some of the things we've touched on tonight, the mental health crisis, the affordable housing crisis, education, childhood poverty, sometimes arts and culture makes it to the back burner. So I think it's important that we think really proactively about how we can create revenue streams that can be then reinvested in our community. And one thing that has been talked about and promised in the past but never has materialized for whatever reason is an office of film here in San Diego. We are right down the road from Los Angeles, the heart of the industry, and yet we don't have a single point person at the county you can call to help facilitate shooting or filming on location. We are missing out on a huge revenue stream that we could then take a portion of and redirect back into our arts community here in San Diego County. So I think it's finally time that we take that idea and make it a reality, bring, bring in parts of the film industry. Obviously, we don't want to become Los Angeles, but this is a massive opportunity for our artists here locally who are working, who don't want to drag all the way up there to participate, as well as a great opportunity for, for funding here. And I also think, the last thing I'll mention is civic art. We have over in San Diego, San Diego has some iconic pieces of civic art. I was down a couple of weeks ago, maybe last weekend, time is really funny these days. But at Cesar Chavez Park for the unveiling of a new mural there, celebrating, celebrating the work that has been done. And it was so, I mean, it was just 30 minutes out of the afternoon that I had to stop by there and see dancers and hear music and just be a part of the community. Civic art is so important and it, I learned so much just in the 30 minutes that I was able to be there. When I think about people, not everybody has the ability to go to a museum or go to a film festival. And so bringing art out into the communities and making sure that we're really investing in that is very important so that people can have those experiences no matter where they live.
I also agree with most of what you said. And I don't know, something's on my face that I couldn't say, am I right? And I think that we have to inject more art into the youth at the elementary level, at the, at high school, things like that. But Justin and I were in improv in high school, I loved it, it was great. This performance, like a class based in front of a tight school, and you just feel amazing doing it and we're laughing and so, this art fund. And we have art all over town. If you don't ever been to Downtown Vista, everyone, they have like all these medals, they have a hymn there from the book, they have like the fine mumpus, they're all defined artists and they're all over Downtown Vista and you walk and it's like, that's what they are, stuff like that, it's so amazing. But I also think that what commissioners should do is branch out and learn from other cities that have done it. Send someone to Chicago, find out what they did, send someone to LA, find out what they did, send someone to GoD, find out what they did. Bring those best practices back there to San Diego. So we can become, if you want to LA or you want to come out beyond politics, LA, we have to start offering the same type of services that people find there. So go out, find the best practices from Albuquerque, Mexico, it's beautiful there at Times Square, right? Rail towns in West Iowa, that do things. Do some research, don't just sit back and say, we're in San Diego, we're in San Diego, we're into what we do. Here's my argument, like I said, we're all in this together. So take the best that exists and live the worst that exists and move forward together and make this stronger and better as one.
This is the final question I have on my sheet. In the county of San Diego, when a new building's project's construction costs are more than $10 million, it triggers a requirement that a percentage of the project goes towards creating public art. Our libraries in the county of San Diego Operation Center are great examples. Do you have any ideas on how other county-funded projects can support the arts? For example, in California, state legislature, there's a bill that would require a percentage of low-income housing to be reserved for working artists. We'll start with Aiden.
Well, as I've said at other forums, I'm actually very concerned about SB 10 and its impact on communities. Because what we're seeing is, we're seeing the literal bulldozing of single-family communities. We're losing the community character, some of the history of our San Diego neighborhoods. And in its place, we're sometimes seeing these 10-story, very impersonal, cold buildings being put up. And our treasured jacaranda trees being chopped down, those beautiful purple flowered trees that we have all over San Diego. And so, yes, if a developer is going to have a significant project, I believe that they actually have a moral obligation to give back to the community through public art, through creating spaces that are engaging with the community, that promote local artists. They're absolutely profiting off of this, so I agree that affordable housing should be made for artists. The other thing that I'd like to see is actually more housing options for artists. And a wise friend of mine who's in the art community who's here this evening said, you know, when you put a bunch of artists together, magic happens. So I'd like to see more of that when these big developments come out, they need to give back to the community through public art, give back to artists. And I'd also like to see some of the things that we could do is, honestly, as we close out the night here, what I see, the biggest need right now in our, our community is opportunities for grants and for funding. And so I would like to see the county of San Diego step up in that area. And as your county supervisor, I vow to be a patron of the arts, to serve you, to support you, to help San Diegans thrive. Thank you.
So yeah, it's a really good question. And I'll go back to the initiative that I created, the Peace Movement. So there were quite a few different programs that made up the Peace Movement, but we did just start, you know, But we did just start, you know, on, on the corner where Malcolm X Library is, called a lot of people together and just said, look, we need to do something better in our community. And we built that plan while we were flying it. One thing that came out of it was our No Shots Fire program, which is a violence interruption program. But in addition to that, our local artists came together. And I mentioned this in the context of the question because we had to seek outside funding to support our artists, to create murals on our electrical boxes and in our community. And, you know, when we ran out of the funding, they were not, they, some of them were volunteering because that's how committed they are to our community. But there was not enough funding in order for them to do their work. And, and those, you know, it's more than just about murals, but it was a cohesiveness in the community and it was a commitment that we had made together that we were going to live in peace. And the local artists were at the, at the forefront of that movement. So I think having requirements that as developers build in our communities, that they're able to pour into a fund that supports our local artists, I think that's extremely important, especially with all of the building going, going on now. We currently have developer impact fees, it could be, you know, set up with something like that so that we have a true commitment to public art and also to artists, to people that create art. It's, it's very important that, as I said in the very beginning, I have incorporated arts and culture into a lot of the solutions that I have brought to the table because I think it's a part of this holistic conversation. And funding should be no different. The requirements should be no different. Because if we are going to make this world better, these are the types of things that we need to do. I'm very committed to that and bringing a lot of those ideas to the county to make this definitely more tangible and more real and, and, and not stereotypically what people think outside of our community when we're talking about these very issues and how they match up with policy. So I think that's extremely important and I'm committed to that.
When it comes to public housing and whether to provide housing for artists, so on and so forth, I, I, I support that to a point. As a former title resident, we've had a couple of homes and we had a Robert Taylor Homes. And it's never, this is kind of a recent disaster since they opened everyone. I feel as if we can provide housing for people that needs to be, they do a bar, a certain bar where food, things like that. They plant, just take a place and then live there and do whatever they want. And then they're all stops. That's not the way it was for us. We all went to high school, college, everything, contributed to the public good. And if we didn't front a hand up, it shouldn't be a hand out. So it was contributed. I think that also the county reserves, pretty much on tax, family of the county has historically been undersold for having reserves at two yards. It's about three times more than the county determines. When it comes to funding for certain things, I think we can work at the county reserves to help fund underfunded projects like the arts, the boxes, permission noise to put random art out in the street, not in the street, but on the street corner. Things like that, things that will help beautify the city, beautify the county and not just San Diego itself, but the suburbs, the streets, down the San Francisco, but it'll open, spread it around, spread the wealth. It shouldn't be all in one place and it should be open to all. And if the funding sources, the ones there in the reserves, we just have to build, tap it and lose it so they'll provide for all.
Do we have any La Masons in the house tonight? Okay, hello. Hi. So a couple of weeks ago, I was really fortunate to be able to tour the La Mesa Arts Academy with Dr. A, who's both the mayor of La Mesa and the leader of that school, the founder of that school, which is a public school that he was able to transition to a full-fledged arts academy. Walking around there, there were students, they were about to have a concert that night. There were like hundreds of kids running around with cellos and violins and, you know, there are little satchels with paintbrushes and it was like no American school, public school that I've seen in quite some time. And it was really moving and incredible to me what they've been able to accomplish there. And one of the reasons they've been so successful at transitioning from a typical public school to this amazing arts academy is that they had a leader who was really familiar with how to source different types of funding from the federal government, from the state government, from the county, from the city, and was able to put that all to work to make that academy function. And when I think about bringing arts into every avenue of what the county does, whether that's building housing on county land or providing, providing stipends to people who are struggling so they can stay in their homes, I think we have, as, as Paul mentioned, we do have a significant reserve fund, but we also leave a ton of money on the table. Imperial County kicks our butt in per capita federal funding. And that means that we're not necessarily, that we have some internal work to do when it comes to our own programs, what we're going after, the grants we're seeking. So in the, where I serve as a combat engineer, that's a type of, it's a very low-grade type of engineer, please don't get it twisted, you do not want me to build anything complex with, with electrical wiring, but I can supervise the guys doing it. And one of the things that I did learn how to do really well was to manage and evaluate systems and find out where you have lost, where, where certain things drag, where you can put more effort into speeding the process along. And I think evaluating how we go after funding from the federal government and the state, making sure we have the right people in place with the right expertise. If they don't have it, training them up so that we can make sure every dollar is here is really important. The other thing I'll say is not maybe as direct, but the county supervises Health and Human Services. And we have a lot of folks out in our county who are currently not insured, a lot of whom happen to be artists who don't necessarily have the income to be able to afford getting insurance on the exchange. We now have, we have an opportunity as a county to really go out into the community and help folks enroll in medica, which is not an easy process to do. I think that would have a direct and very tangible impact on the lives of our artists who are maybe waiting to sell their big piece or living show to show and don't have that insurance in between and make sure that they are able to live safe and healthy lives.
Can we real quickly here for our moderator? We're going to give each candidate one more, just one minute at least to say one last thing about whatever they want to say. So we'll start, we'll just start there and take the microphone.
Okay, well, thank you again for coming out tonight. I know that this election is certainly way faster than anyone anticipated. And there hasn't really been a lot of time for many of you to get to know all of us. So I would just like to say I'm going to be around after. I'd love to chat with you if we haven't met before, we'd like to have a longer conversation. It means so much to me that you're out here tonight on a Friday. I was talking with a gentleman in the back earlier about how sometimes we're at these events and we might have very different policy ideas or solutions. I think a lot, a lot of similarities here tonight. But at the end of the day, this is not normal. The majority of Americans don't participate in events like this. So to take time out of your day, to do the work that you do in your individual lives to make our community better, that means so much to me. And it means so much to have the opportunity to have this conversation with you. I hope that this is just the beginning of the conversation and it's much longer and we can, we can talk about a lot more things. I encourage you to come to any of the other forums. There's one happening tomorrow morning in City Heights if you're really into it. But please reach out if you'd like to get involved in our campaign. We are a grassroots people-powered campaign. We'd love to have you. Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, I also echo that. Thanks for coming. I've actually, I really enjoyed this. It's just nice to just sit down and talk with people. Vice, what we see on TV with people down and stuff like that. Bless them. It, it, it's, it's nice to meet, I enjoy meeting people. I'm a people person. I also hang around, I fed my dog, so they're not waiting for me at home and then they're waiting for me, but they're not dying, so. It's, I just, it's pretty real pleasant. And I feel very comfortable up there, speaking with everyone. It feels just like, kind of like a fireside chat. And it's, it's, this has been a very interesting experience, this whole election process. It's a sprint, I've never found like most elections. And so thankfully it'll be over with before we know it. But it, it's been a great experience that makes some really fabulous people. And I, I chose to listen. So if I made mistakes, I'm going off my rocker. But yeah, I, I really enjoy San Diego and I love it here and, um, for this, based on my mom's, she lived here also, was in San Diego County. So, and my father also was in San Diego County. So my entire family was in San Diego County. So I have a vested interest in the county as a whole. And that's it.
So yes, I will say thank you so much for being involved in this extremely important race. It's really good to be with you all this evening. I, I was born and raised here in San Diego, actually in the district outside of going to college in Atlanta, Georgia, coming back home to go to law school here at California Western. I did between the time that I was in college and going to law school, got really sick with an autoimmune illness that really changed the course of my life and also the way that I see other people. My mother had to apply for IHSS and Home Supportive Services to help take care of me. We have been through the county system, the county services. And to be here before you right now, as an attorney and also a council member that currently represents 21% of the larger supervisory district, I feel very blessed and honored to be here with you and to have this opportunity. So I want to take that professional and that personal experience and take it to the county board of supervisors. I center people in my work that is easier said than done in a bureaucracy. And so I want to express how important that is and that value is because we all have good intentions, but to be able to carry those through, I have proven that I will do that and I can and I can be successful. And I'm asking you to trust me in taking that to the county board of supervisors to represent you, this community that is so important to the larger region and all of the San Diegans that live in the county. Thank you so much for your time.
I believe it is the obligation of every single human that when you see human suffering, you're obligated to act. That when you see injustice, you must right that injustice. And I asked a friend to be here tonight and she just came in a little bit late and I did warn her beforehand. Will the Sanchez family please stand up? So you might know her very well. This is Chris and this is Karen Sanchez. And they have the Soap Factory. And that's actually where I met Bob. And Edwin, you were there too. It's just a place that helps artists thrive. And how I met the Sanchez's was through our markets. And so they had a booth and you were able to sell what you make with your very own hands and it was able to at least help you in that very difficult time to provide a little bit for your family. And so I just want to let you know that that's the kind of leadership that I will lead with, putting people first, addressing human suffering, not just talking about it and complaining about it, but doing something about it. And I just want to thank the Sanchez family again for everything you do for the art community. And art community, as your next county supervisor, I've got your back.
Thank you all, thank you all for being here. Yeah, there we go, came back. Once again, thank you to the Mingay and all their staff and volunteers and to Matt Carney for all the work he did to help set this up. And once again, thank you to each of you candidates, not just for tonight, for all the things you've done going through the community and holding these, these forums. If I could ask all four...